I want to welcome everyone to this information meeting. This service, 911, is kind of one of those services that's out there and you really don't know what it's about until you use it, need it, and use it. And then you're thankful that you've got. We want to make our 911 service as efficient and as advanced as we possibly can. We've talked a little bit so far this last couple of months about emergency medical dispatch, and that's still very much on our radar, although it didn't quite get into the budget the way we want. But we're here today to talk about 911, the history of 911, the structure of 911, the legality of 911. And I don't know if we have time for questions. We'll see where we are at the end of all this. No further delay.
I'd like to say he's up to do.
Well, go right ahead.
Because we don't get this captive audience too often. So in spite of our location and in spite of the equipment that we give these folks to work with, we still have the best center in the state of Kentucky. And we don't tell our employees thanks enough for what they do. So this is my opportunity to say, you know, you do a great job. It was so great when I walked in to see Robin, because I know she's put a life in out here. And I thank you all for the service that you do.
Anyone else from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Paul George. Thank you, Mayor. And let me also just generally add my welcome to everyone out here at our Danville County 911 Center. This facility, if you might recall, is the old call station. The facility is owned by the city of Danville, but we share it jointly with the county in numerous ways, including head of Mike Walker, who uses it for emergency management meetings out here as a guest of ours. Just an administrative sound. We do have a rest room facility through that first door if anyone needs to use it this morning. And also, at the conclusion of our meeting this morning, I would remind the commission and our elected county officials who are here, and thank you for coming, that we do plan, and our newspaper reporter as well, a brief tour of the facilities for those that may not have seen our 911 telecommunicators in action in quite a while or maybe ever. We have to minimize experience to provide the security and privacy required under law, but we will have a brief opportunity to go through them. 911, just a brief history, a footnote. 911 really became a national term in the national discussion about 1968. In 1988, September 13th, at the minutes of our Danville City Information Reflect, that there was agreement among the city and the county and the two other cities within Boyle County to join together to fund appropriately, as was determined by agreement at that time, the funding of the 911 Center. That agreement in September 13th, 1988, had Danville paying 71% of the total cost, Boyle County paying 19%, Junction City 9%, and Perryville 1%. And that was the sort of the involuntary, as far as I can determine, unwritten agreement that we reached at that time to the leadership of John Bowling and our esteemed former city manager, Ed Newsing. That relative share of funding continued, really, without change as far as I could determine through a quick look over the archives, until probably sometime prior to my arrival in 2011, when the county did increase their funding somewhat as a result of discussions that took place earlier that year. I'm not sure whether that increase in funding, which Michelle put into here, changed the relative percentages or not, but I guess the bottom line is it was a recognition that it's a service needed throughout the county, and everyone kind of pitched in to make the funding work. We do have challenges with any service that we provide in terms of inflation and ongoing costs. And of course, we've had recent discussions about the need to update that obsolete equipment this year. And we'll be talking about our plans to continue to improve that equipment and to necessarily replace it to ensure the reliability of the system to our taxpayers and citizens. I doubt any of us have cars or radios or televisions or any electronic equipment that goes back to 1988 that we might consider to still be reliable. We might have some historical relics in our house, but they're sort of that. So that's kind of the origin. The funding of 911 centers across the state are really funded through the local enactment of a telephone tax, usually countywide, upon landline users. Boyle County did that in the 80s and levied that rate at 50 cents per month for landline, as well as tax being imposed on cell phones. And in recent years, the legislature's brought in that tax to prepay as well as your other ongoing cellphone services, which coupled with additional general fund revenues from the city and the county really comprise the funding for 911 services. Other counties, including those nearby, have increased their landline fees to a much higher rate than originally enacted many years ago. Some are now $3 or $4 a month, for example, in an effort to try to generate the fees necessary to provide that service. IRSS remained at the same rate over those years. And the city and the county, in particular the city, I would say, would pay the largest share of those expenses and have these general funds to continue to meet the expenses of operating 911 Center. But the 911 Center, if you think about it, is really the heart of the ability of our first responders to be timely in their response. We have a reputation that has developed as a result of the operation of our center, where audits and performance over a number of years have showed a zero error rate, for example, and were held out as the model from the Justice Training Bureau. In fact, this week, and Rebecca might mention this, it's ready to tell, but I mean, we periodically are called upon to go to other centers and talk about how we provide service because of our excellence as recognized by our audience. And when you have thousands of calls a year and you have a zero error rate, that speaks to the dedication, ability, and training and competence in the delivery of service.
If you don't mind, I'd like to applaud that.
It is worth applauding, and frequently. And I think all too often, just speaking candidly, we don't recognize these men and women behind the scenes who are really heroes in our community for their dedication and provision of that service. So I'm glad to have said that. With regard to, you know, the question of audit of our service, in the years since I have been here, which is always 2011, I've received no complaints with regard to the delivery of service with regard to dispatch. I have received one complaint with regard to changes in administrative procedures to support law enforcement agencies that came about as a result of state police audit essentially saying that 911 dispatch was not a clerical function for the law enforcement agencies. They won't talk about that. There have been no allegations, no formal complaints, no informal complaints, other than that one complaint about a change brought about by state police audit. So again, I think it goes to the excellence of service we provided over the years and continue to do so. And if there are outstanding issues and things need to be improved or if there are issues, tell me or tell the police chief, and I'm sure we will look into those. But there have been really no complaints for us over that history, as far as I'm aware. So we wish to continue to improve our service, to update our equipment. And this morning is really, in my mind, a celebration about continuing to operate our 911 Center for the benefit of all who reside in Boyle County. Now, our agreement back in 1988 does, and it's informal, it was an agreement, that was a handshake as things were done back in those days. And, you know, that doesn't mean that all parties may necessarily wish to continue in a partnership if they see that there's a better deal out there for them. We do not think, and we look into the question of mergers with Bluegrass 911. We think it's premature and not in the best interest of Danville, certainly in citizens, and really the citizens of Boyle County to take that route. We have proven performance. That is a new organization that came about really because of the collapse of one of those county's 911 operations. And they may have a fine organization, but the cost-benefit analysis does not show that it would be beneficial to Danville to participate. And I do this frankly, that it would be beneficial to Boyle County to participate.
But that would be up to them to determine themselves.
Yes, I mean certainly. If Boyle County wishes to have their dispatch provided by that center, and they feel led to do so, it would invariably, though, as we continue to operate ours, it would, the way it's set up, and Nick, our IT director, can speak to this, it would require a longer transmission and delays in terms of getting a signal through or a request through. So when seconds matter, it's going to be a much longer, or at least some longer, response time. So I can't see that it's going to be beneficial to residents to have that done. Now, it might, on the surface, appear to save money the first year, but I do this frankly, that the county could enter into that arrangement and actually save money the first year. And that's based upon the financial information provided to us, as Michelle will mention. So we intend to, want to, and wish to continue to provide service to all in Boyle County as we've done since around 1988. And that's why we are planning to improve our equipment, to replace the obsolete equipment, to get into the next generation capability of service to benefit all our citizens, particularly our deaf community, in terms of being able to communicate via computer and text messages and video. And so we see no reason, really, to cease operations. In fact, it's contrary to the history of cities and to any urban environment, where people join together to collectively try to seek improvement in their lives. And where mergers have occurred throughout the country, it has always been, to my knowledge, an urban area reaching out, not exposure of an urban area going to a rural area for the delivery of services. It just counter to the ability to maintain knowledge in an in-depth way of the complex piece of an urban structure. I wish the Bluegrass 911 Center well. I know they're reaching out to rural counties, and they may mind an itch that they can provide that type of service. But it would be a continued and great challenge to think that a center could provide as much knowledge to local responders as would be provided by people in the local area. And do you are familiar with the roads and streets and all of that? So with that, I will just say our intent is to continue to provide service, and we plan to do so. Any questions on that? Or if not, we will talk to, maybe have Nick Warren talk about our upgrade, including while this facility did serve in an interim measure for the 911 Center. We had planned with the construction of City Hall to incorporate that within that structure for safety reasons, for the efficiency reasons, for the technical reasons of the telephone lines that we have there. And so maybe with just that introduction, I'll ask Nick to talk about our current plan for expansion of services.
As part of our expansion or the upgrade, we've got four main areas that we're going to upgrade, the first being our CAD software. That's what basically keeps track of all our call data. As part of that, we're going to be implementing a new mobile system that'll be available to first responders and their vehicles, and we give them call data, automatic vehicle location data if they choose to use it, and for law enforcement officers, their NCIC data, all in one package without having to use multiple software packages. The second piece of equipment we're going to upgrade is our actual call taking equipment. That's what handles what's called ANI and ALI, which is Automatic Number Identification and Automatic Location Identification. That equipment, when you call in, tells us what number you are, where you're located, gives us some information to help get the call started. That equipment we have now is approximately, that I can find, is about 20 years old. It predates my time being here. I've been in this job for about 17 years. So it's worked well, it still does today, but the problem we're running into is we can't get parts and we have to go out bartering to get them as we need them. It's also not compatible with the new NG911 standards and won't allow us to do text, video, that are going to be, I think, soon to be mandated standards. They're not currently, but... The third piece we're going to upgrade is our voice recorder system, mainly because as we switch over, we're going to be going to IP-based call recording, and our current system does not do that. We're also going to be implementing some new screen recording, which is another layer for us to have logged of what happens during the process of a call. The fourth section we're going to upgrade is going to be our radio consoles. They're mainly being upgraded because they have to become IP-compatible to work with the interconnection of all the systems. It'll also allow us to operate with a fewer number of radios, so it'll cut down on the volume of equipment that we have to maintain daily. Those are the four main areas. They all work in together with each other. Part of the NG911 standard is, is that everything interconnects via an IP network instead of being standalone pieces that just kind of, they work together in the past but not efficiently. So as part of this, it'll allow us to have interconnection with other agencies in a little more efficient manner than call transfers now, as other agencies become NG knowledge compatible, and many in our area already are. They're getting on what's called a Central Kentucky 911 network. Basically, it allows for, if there's an additional call volume that we can't handle, it'll roll over to a nearby agency and vice versa for them. We can handle their roll over, VB. It'll also facilitate upgrades in a more timely manner if we need to add additional call volume or trunk volume. While it's not currently a standard throughout the state, there's a few agencies that are doing the text. My understanding, I thought it was about five or six agencies, but it will soon become a standard, and we need to be prepared for it. And this system allows us to be prepared for that and becoming video calling, which I think won't be too far behind.
Yeah, while you're looking, if I can interrupt you. So I'm hearing a lot about upgrades.
Correct.
You understand technology, what state of the art today is.
Absolutely. And it's not to say we haven't been upgrading our center. We have, you know, there's many pieces and parts in there. The actual 911 call taking, which is kind of the core of your 911 system, has not been upgraded in many years. It's still an analog system. It works fine. I'm not saying by any means it doesn't. It's just we're running into issues that when we need service and parts, it's getting hard to find them.
So from my simple mind, what will we be adding as opposed to upgrade?
We will not actually be adding really anything. We're going to basically just replace equipment that's analog now into an IP-digital format. The only thing that we are planning on adding will be the number of trunks we have. We currently have four that we split between landline and wireless. As I'm sure many know, wireless has become the preferred means of communication. Our landline volume is, I think, down to less than 20% now.
It's 10%.
10%, as Rebecca said. We are going to go from allocating lines in a specific manner to just having a combined allocation. About six months ago, we also had AT&amp;T do a busy line study for us. And basically what they do is they monitored our calls and saw how many times that an 911 caller hit a busy signal. That's not to say it didn't get answered. It does what's called an administrative rollover, where it rolls over into one of our admin lines and they can still get the call. But we found, based off AT&amp;T's study, that we need to add approximately two trunks at our current call volume, and that would handle our yearly increase we have for several years to come.
So we've got the best personnel. You're going to get us the best equipment. What, if money weren't an issue, what would you add to this and why?
Really, I don't see much we could add.
I like that answer.
I'm sure I could come up with something if given.
No, you don't need to. You don't need to do it.
You know, the biggest thing we're going to add that I think will help most will be the mobile system. It'll allow, you know, call takers or responders, excuse me, to interact with call takers on their CAD information, which is their run volumes, their times, all that stuff. A lot of that now, it's, if you listen to radio traffic, as soon as a call's over, it's fax is here or send it here. And they can already have that available to them. They can have their call history based on where they're at, and, I forget what you call it, but notices on a specific address.
Alerts.
Alerts per address. That'll be prompt to them as soon as they receive their call. It'll give them those alerts as well. It'll have mapping in their vehicles that's updated as soon as the dispatch updates their mapping.
You're talking about just efficiency?
Mm-hmm.
Safety?
Mm-hmm.
All first responders can see where other first responders are at, you know, with the mapping? It's going to cut down on really some communications and time for dispatchers. They will have, even, we will have access to information that usually we have to call in on the radio or call on the telephone and say, hey, can you give me this? Can you give me that? It's going to be on there in details. It's going to be a lot safer and more efficient. And it's going to cut down on some of the drain that we put on them.
So I guess I would like, or if you can, which you kind of just did that, Chief. Can someone contrast what happens with a call now to what will happen? And like I said, you just kind of did that, but...
Well, for example, let's just say there's a wreck. Okay, EMS goes, fire goes, and we go. Right now, we've got two dispatches in there. You've got three different agencies responding. And let's just, if it's, just say it's a simple wreck. It's not a wreck where we get a call, air evac, or somebody like that. But still, but if it's at Houstonville in the bypass here, I mean, you're probably going to get 30 phone calls. 911, people on cell phones saying, there's a wreck, there's a wreck here, there's a wreck here. While they're answering the phone, they're also going to be trying to tell each one of us where to go. So you've just got two people doing all of that, and that's just the start of it. So, you know, then, once we get there, we'll take care of the wreck and do that. Well, EMS will ask for their times if they've got to transport somebody to the hospital and stuff like that. So they'll either ask on the radio, or they'll usually call or whatever, you know, and ask dispatch for that. Fire will do the same thing. The police officer will do the same thing, running by time to the case number, and dah 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 dah. Now with the new system, that all do, with they've got MBTs in those vehicles that have access to all that, those phone calls, that radio traffic will not be there. They have access to that, they get it automatically. That will cut down on a lot, some of those. And we have, we have over 100 some wrecks a year in the city. Some months we average 70, 80 wrecks a month.
Let me ask you a question. We have sustained discussion. I'm in downtown Danville. I have an incident. And then I'm in the forest reaches corner of the county, and I have an incident. What's the difference in what happens in this center when those two calls come in?
Nothing.
No, say it out loud. What's that?
Nothing.
Okay, that's what I thought the answer was.
We treat them, they're treated the same, the dispatch the same, it's just who you send is what it is.
Because you don't know when it's black or white, male or female, it's just a call, right? Doesn't matter, right?
Correct.
Well, I asked that question because I want to be sure we get that cleared up right now, that there's no difference between a call that's received from a person located in the city versus a person located in the county, or if it's a traveler coming through the city and county with no residency requirements, and still it's pretty the same. Thank you.
Can I make a comment on your suggestion? There is a little bit of a difference. And one of the things that we talk about when we do our data, collect our data, one of the things we notice that dispatch is the tip of the spear when it comes to cardiac arrest patients. So the difference would be, in the city of Danville, our response time is between six and seven minutes, which you agreed. But in the far corners of the county, it could be 20 minutes.
For you to what? For you to get there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I was talking about from the call center, though.
Well, this is what I'm getting to.
Okay, all right.
With the emergency medical dispatch that we've been asking for, the difference would be, if they're not doing it, doing the CPR instructions, it would be seven minutes without CPR versus 20 minutes without CPR.
Sure.
And that's a difference that we look at.
Correct.
But that's the difference between the new system.
I think what your question is, is do we dispatch the call any differently, not what do we do after we dispatch the call?
Right, that's what my question is about. Yeah, I know the equipment's...
We dispatch the call the same, no matter where it's at.
Yeah. I read some recent articles in the paper that just gave me like, oh my God, are we saying that actors live in the city? His call is done one way, and actors live in the county, his call is done another way? Now, that's what I'm getting at. That's not, there's no difference in that, right? I know the time difference, if I'm out there and the knobs have a heart attack and you guys trying to get to me, I know there's a difference, huh? But what happens in that center, though? You know, make sure we clear that up. There's no difference.
Is this also going to help response time in the county with finding the location? Because I know sometimes if they're out on the fork somewhere and in the middle of nowhere, are the responders going to be able to have some assistance in finding these places better?
I would think with having mapping available in vehicles, it won't hurt. And I can't speak for them on how their response times are going, but I would think if that's some extra bit of information they have available, sure they're not going to hurt. But I can respond as far as what would it do to response times?
Well, it seems like maybe we're at the appropriate time to shift to that subject, which is dispatch operations. That suits everybody.
Has kind of having overview of some of our numbers and a little bit of what we do. We do handle emergency and non-emergencies calls for all who live, work, or pass through Boyle Counties, whether they be going to a job in a different county. We dispatch for law enforcement, fire, and ambulance services totaling approximately 350 emergency responders for nine agencies. Not all of those are on duty at once, but our average call volume I took over the last five years, our 911 call volume is 18,667 calls a year on average. The dispatch calls for service, which is where we would send an ambulance, a law enforcement officer, or a fire truck, is approximately 23,415 calls. And then administrative calls is about 110,000 a year. Variety of calls for service range from anywhere from a fatality accident to homicide to a motorist assist, someone calling and asking for a phone number. I think the chief gave an example of, you know, a wreck in Houstonville where on the bypass, we could take 30 to 60 calls on it. The first thing that you have to do when taking that call is get help on the way, because the calls are going to continue to come until they see emergency responders there to help. Police fire EMS, work one call at a time, though they do have multiple functions in those calls. The dispatcher handles all of that. When the telephone rings or responder calls on the radio, they must be answered, no matter what emergency's going on at the time. The multitasking and confidentiality level of the dispatcher is very high. We also provide NCIC, the National Crime Information Center, for 13 agencies within our county. The database is for stolen property, missing persons, wanted person, criminal histories, and domestic violence paperwork, which is audited by the state, which I think Mr. Scott had mentioned. In March of 2016, we received our audit with a 0.00% error rate. This is the reason that we do have to be in a secure area with the limited access to the information on the database. Current staffing levels, we are currently two dispatchers short, and we lost our data entry operator. As we meet today, my assistant director, Melinda Ennis, is in Glasgow assisting KSP, Department of Criminal Justice, in doing a needs assessment for their center that we were recommended by the DOCJT to assist in.
You said 110,000 administrative calls? Did you find that for us? What's an administrative call?
Um, I've had a wreck. I need to pick up my accident. I need to know where my vehicle was towed from an accident. I need a phone number. Non-emergency calls. You know, I've come home from work and my house has been burglarized. They may call 911, they may call the administrative line.
And I always make my mind when you're right in the middle of a major emergency, right? And I always make remind you, right in the middle of a major emergency, right?
Yes, we do also get emergency calls on admin lines. You have someone accidentally has it programmed, I mean, we've taken armed robberies, we've taken, you don't know what the phone's gonna be when you pick it up, no matter what line it's on.
Even if it's on the admin line, it could still be an emergency.
Correct.
Could, could we get a copy of what you're reading off, just, just ahead?
Sure.
I think that's...
Sure.
That says a lot.
My people, my kids.
Yeah. You tell us, talk about full-time employees, because you said you were down two?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really, down three people, I guess, right?
Yes, but I don't believe the data entry operator will be rehired because of the electronic system that we went to with EMD.
That will take care of that part of it?
Correct.
But you, so what's, what's your current employment level? You had, you're at full capacity?
How many current dispatchers do I have?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What do you need?
How many do you need?
Yes, you need two.
I need two.
But how many are you allotted for the other?
Twelve.
Twelve people. Twelve highly trained people take care of all of your clients. And that's twenty-four seven.
There's over a hundred and thirty thousand a year.
That's part of the...
I'm gonna turn my phone off.
That's, that's part of the, the reasons that we haven't been able to go to EMD right now, is because we're, two people cannot do what we talked about and try to provide that CPR service. Yeah. That was part of our attempt is to hire more people, and that was part of that budget decrease that we talked about, is we need staffing to do those things. Those agencies that are doing those things are a lot bigger and have more staff than we do.
So the newspaper article, be sure we advertise that we have two vacancies in our...
We do have two vacancies.
...looking for two highly certified, trainable, confidential...
Correct.
Employees.
But, I mean, we, we feel that we are committed to trying to get to providing EMD services. There, there's no, no swag in that commitment. We have to have staff to do that. That's just the bottom line to it. And with these new upgrades and the things that we're doing, it will take some things off of staff. And we'll free them up to start doing some other things. We, we've got to get to that point first, and we gotta have staff to do that.
So I hate to ask this question, but I think I know the answer, but if we were to do that tomorrow, what would be the additional need for staff?
We anticipate at least four, four new employees to do that.
For the EMD?
To do EMD, three sixty-five, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day.
Plus all the additional training?
They do get the training in, in the academy.
Oh, okay.
But there's some, there's some additional, you know, with, like, there's different softwares and different things like that, you know, but, but the basis is given to them at the academy. It, it's just, it's the staffing.
I cannot put any more responsibility on my telecommunicators, or they're gonna break.
You're doing such a low-stress lucrative job anyway.
Oh, excellent. Excellent.
I think as well.
Yes.
Well, that's to Tony's point, you know, we, we did remove EMD from our budget this year, but we did not abandon that completely.
No.
Just, we already had this in motion, and we didn't feel like we could do both at the same time. So hopefully, spring and this time next year is when we can have the EMD conversation and, and get that implemented.
I mean, dispatch has been evolving since, I, I first took this job, you know, five years ago. I mean, we've been continually, we've had staffing problems, we've been continually evolving this facility, and ultimately trying to get them into the facility that downstairs at, at City Hall, and the upgrades and all this stuff. This is not just something that's happened overnight or last night. This has been a long-term thought process, and...
Wait, you may touch on this later, so I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but what are the advantages of being at City Hall versus...
Primarily, it comes down to the type of trunks we're gonna have to put in, we're gonna need to put in fiber. It's more efficient and costly for us to do it there because it's closer to the operation, Network Operations Center for AT&amp;T. The interconnection of the data circuits we're gonna need to provide the mobile access to clients and the interaction with the servers at PD that handle, without trying to get too in-depth, but handle who's allowed to do what. To do it here, we would have to have additional circuits that would interconnect the two buildings. They're very costly on a monthly basis, so getting it there takes a huge monthly cost out of that process, and to be honest, it is a simple process for me. I don't have to be at two places at one time.
You know, Kevin, this building is not, you know...
Right.
Four, five years will be, you know, this will be like a pride of honor.
And there's a morale issue too, Chief.
It's gonna be cost-effective also because we've been there over here.
Yeah, I, I'll talk about some of the, the comments and the articles and some of the things, you know. Does the center operate differently than the heads in the past? Yes, we have, we are operating different. You know, there's new mandates every day and requirements and things like that by the state, no staff. So are, are we operating differently than what we did, you know, five years ago? Definitely we are. But philosophy-wise, philosophically, you know, we are committed to officer safety, responder safety, and the safety of all citizens. And that's our first priority. You know, it, it's a team effort, bring it together, and dispatch is part of my team. And, you know, we're in this thing together. I know there's some concerns and about maybe status checks and things like that, and when I first started, I felt like I reached out to the county agencies, and maybe I needed to do that more, you know, maybe that's on me. But I thought we made great strides when I first took over as chief and some of the partnerships and bridged some gaps and things with the county agencies. But if there, if there's something that those guys or girls feel like that we're not doing to the best, you know, just let me know, and we'll try to address those concerns. Because that, that is not my philosophy, and it's not their philosophy. Those, those young ladies and men that work behind those doors over there, I mean, they worry about us all the time, and I know that. And I appreciate everything they've done for us. Since I've been chief in, in these five years, I mean, Damboll unfortunately has had some significant events. I mean, my first week, we had the double homicide, triple shooting on High Street. We had a stabbing on Goggins Road a few months, six months, we had a murder right before the vice presidential debate. We had the robbery at Domino's, we had the shooting in Jerry's Body Shop, and not, and least of all, you know, not, you know, the pawn shop. I mean, those ladies and guys right there took those phone calls, they're part of my team, and I think we did a good job handling those. You know, and I appreciate it. So, you know, I like my team. Can we do better? We all can. Ain't none of us perfect. I like my team. You know, I like the things we're getting ready to do in the future. I think it's gonna make us better. And the decisions that we make are not just for the citizens of Damboll, not for the, just the first responders in Damboll, but for this whole community. You know, it's a big responsibility. I realize it, I realize it more and more every day, and, you know, we wanna be the best. I feel like I got some of the best, and we'll get better.
I'm gonna venture out here on a little thin ice. We're all, we're all trying to get the same thing done. We're all trying to provide a service. In my conversations, the elephant in the room is a, I'll use the term disconnect, a miscommunication, which Scott referenced earlier. I think we need to put that subject out front and center and discuss it amongst all of us, so that we all hear the same thing. And I'll paraphrase what I understand to be the disconnect, that calls into the dispatch center for service outside of the city are routed differently. I'd like for anyone here from the Sheriff's Department, or Chief, if you wanna take that up and paraphrase it, this seems to be central to the discussion, in my opinion, as to why, why there may be some desire to look elsewhere for services. Anybody from Sheriff's Department wanna pipe up here?
Well, I think y'all made it pretty clear you wanted this just to be a city of Damboll meeting, so I'm just here to, if y'all wanna discuss that, we'd probably love to, but I'm gonna give it to the sheriff.
Then, how, how should we best take that conversation forward?
Well, I, I got an opinion on this. Probably get, get with the county leadership, the meeting together.
If I may interject too, one of the things that I've been involved in the process is looking at process, which is what I do a lot for the city. And one thing through staff meetings was there's, there've been no formal complaints filed. People may object to something casually or without some type of precision, meaning this particular call was handled improperly, or this particular accident was handled in a manner in which we didn't receive the type of status checking or whatever type of information we desired we didn't get. So the city has received maybe general comments, but nothing with precision where tapes can be reviewed and, and documented to be evaluated with personnel to say, well, did we handle that right or not? So what we have talked about is bettering the system by coming up with some type of policy that would just say how, in fact, a complaint is received. In order for something to be managed properly, it has to be documented so it can get to the right channels. So it's not sufficient enough to complain to a dispatcher. There needs to be a formal written complaint form where that can be reviewed by management or the chief or even the city manager. That's something that's not in place now. There, there is not a formal complaint process or procedure. There's not a form, but there's also not been any written letter, document, or, or anything other than casual comments, which can't be studied and can't be evaluated. So one way to potentially better the system is to have a process or a procedure in place that could deal with complaints. We do it with everything else we have at the city, every other ordinance we have. We say if there's someone who objects or has some type of grievance, you do it in a certain way, but it can't be done orally or casually and without precision in order for results to be made and effectively see if things were proper or not.
It really should not be discussed at this level, first time we heard about it.
Absolutely not. Those types of administrative things should be handled by management at the center and include the chief as well. And, but, I mean, the city manager certainly should be involved in that, probably just depending on what is, what is involved, but not at the commission level, no.
That, that, all that said, this issue is central to the topic of nine-one-one. I appreciate your process comments. I'm not quite there in terms of, I get a heck of a lot more done sitting down with somebody and saying, can we, can we have a conversation about what the issue is, and can we have a conversation about figuring out how we resolve this? So I would like to challenge, challenge being a good term, that, that, that the sheriff and the chief, with the city manager, counsel if necessary, set aside an hour or two to talk about this issue and figure out a way to make it work better. I'll, I'll end it there.
Well, and that's gonna go into some of the comments that I have too, in my section that we discussed.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment that I sense some animosity, and, and we, we are not here to exclude anyone. We are here to gather information and then see how we need to proceed. And there probably will be a joint meeting at some point, but we're not there yet.
I don't mean any animosity, it's just, you know, I need to come prepared to...
Sure, yeah, sure.
That's fine.
So we need to have a forum, y'all sit down.
Right, but I just want you to know, we, we are not here to exclude the county. We are here to find the information for ourselves and then decide how we need to approach this situation, and we're jointly with the county. So I just want you to know that, and I want everyone to know that. Okay, okay, good. Go ahead, Stephen.
I don't know if now the conversation suits in that direction, if it's appropriate for me to jump in front of Michelle.
Never appropriate to jump in front of Michelle. We're okay with that.
Michelle, I'll wrestle you for it.
Really, she was just bad, isn't she?
When we, when we have looked and evaluated other arrangements for nine-one-one centers across the state, the model that keeps coming to the top as being the most effective is the idea of having service agreements with the, with public agencies. So if in effect, the city has expressed a desire to continue to maintain and excel as a public service answering point here in Boyle County, then it is, there's a model out there that says that there would be simply service agreements with all the public agencies that it serves, meaning there'd be a separate service agreement with, with the county, with Parable, Junction City, you know, all the different public agencies serve, that clearly identifies the roles and responsibilities of the parties, as well as a contractual obligation for the financial aspect of it. But it's in those types of agreements that we can handle how grievances are filed, if you think there's something objectionable in the process. It can be outlined by contract and agreement how those are resolved. There are examples of, of those across the state, and it's the example and model that the city staff feels would be most effective here moving forward. We also have longstanding history with these types of arrangements and a lot of precedent for it, one of which being the emergency management director position. City of Damboll has no type of administrative function over that position other than paying its portion of the costs and expenses for Mike Wilder's operation. It's something we share in cost, but have no management or financial guidance over. The same could be sa, said for solid waste management. The, you know, the city contributes equally to Donna Fector's operation, but again, doesn't have any say-so in her day-to-day operations. It's a simply contracted-for service that we share. Those work well, they're efficient, the city meets its obligation, but it's clearly defined, and, and we move forward. Staff feels that the same would be effective in the nine-one-one call center by having similar types of service arrangements with the county agencies served. That way, it would allow flexibility on, on both people's parts. If the county is considering moving to another service, then they're certainly free to do so. However, moving forward, if services should be rendered... However, moving forward, if services should be rendered by, for example, then we should enter into a service agreement that says what we're going to do and why we do it. You know, we've been doing this since 1998 without an agreement of any sort, and the times do not dictate that that is either successful. It creates some confusion and delay when rights and responsibilities are not clearly outlined in an agreement. So that would be staff's ultimate recommendation when the process is completed. I think they've shown the necessity to continue the city's 911 call center and that the other parties, should they determine on their own that the city provides that service the best to them, then let's enter an agreement that says what those rights and responsibilities of all parties will be. Michelle.
I just wanted to go over a few of the financial plans that go on, and if there was, while we, one of the reasons why we decided that the merger may not be on a financial level of this is done for Boyle or Danville. In the 2017 I can budget, as you know, we have $788,663 budgeted for that, for the 911 function or the communication function. We always come under budget. This is for full staff, and we are not full staff. As Rebecca's already said, we're two down. So we already know we're going to come under staffing budget. Under Robyn's, Tulligan's, and under Rebecca's also, they always keep a tight budget and usually come in under, way under budget on local operations also. Our last audited year, 2015-16, communications spent only $592,716. Of that, $90,000 was given, was from our 911 fund that comes from the state, and Bull County Fiscal Court contributed $137,151. City of Junction, $6,952, and City of Parable, $521. This left the City of Danville paying from our general fund, $358,092. We have met with Fiscal Court on this matter on several occasions, and they brought us some information after they met with Bluegrass 911 on how much operations would cost going over there, and they came back with a figure of $1,375,095. This number is with minimum staff, and we went over and talked to Bluegrass 911 also and had a nice sit-down with them. And as we talked and as they understood our call volume a little bit better with Rebecca's numbers and the fact that we gave them, that, you know, that minimal staffing probably would not cut it in the future years, that it would have to be increased. This is not completing root increases for the new building and other things that come, as Nick talked about trunks and things like that, that after we discussed that, you know, we use the same amount of trucks, I think, as they use, correct?
We use the same amount for one county as they do for two.
Yes, they use for two. So that, there's some increases that they did not think about in there, which are also not one-time expenses, but ongoing monthly expenses. So this is a minimum number in my mind, based on what we can. Furthermore, as we talked to them, the one-third, one-third, one-third dividing of the funds would only be for the first year. After that, they would go strictly on call volume. Based on the call volume that they have now and the call volume that Rebecca gave them, they estimated that we would, that Bull County would have 60% of the call volume, meaning that Bull County would have to pay 60% of the budget in the future years, not a third, 60%, which would bring that up in that minimum call volume to $825,057, which is more than what we had budgeted this year for a full staff. So basically, you know, we, over the years, it could be more costly than less costly based on call volume, I mean, based on, you know, what happens. You're all not going to hear me say this very often, but it's not only about the money here also. You know, we, you have very knowledgeable staff. I've had the privilege of my past jobs of seeing a lot of 911 centers and communication staffs. You've got a very knowledgeable staff. They really are concerned with the safety of all first responders, and that is, that is good, you know? That trumps money. And their quick responses to citizens, and if you want to go on even further, you have, you know, 12 employees that, yeah, they could probably, some of them go and work somewhere else, go and work at the center, but they would lose their benefits, they would lose their retirement, they're not on CERs retirement, they would lose that, they would lose their health benefits. Many of these people are single women with children. They would get $300 and have to go through their health insurance, and y'all know how about, how far that would go. So it's not always about money. Sometimes it is about. I might not ever say this again, y'all write it down. It's also about other things also. Yes?
Michelle, would you just find, tell us, see, Bluegrass 911 really is? How much money they find, how many are?
Bluegrass 911 is the 911 and call center dispatched for Lincoln and Garrett counties right now.
Who owns it?
They're controlled by a board that is, I think, four from Lincoln County and four from Garrett County.
There's four from each member county that sits on the board.
Each judge executive gets to pick who's on the board.
They're not county employees or whatever?
No, they're not.
No, they're not county employees. They, they're on a, they are not on a CER system at all.
And these board members are just citizens? They're not any kind of elected officials?
Some of them are, some of them are not. The judge executive gets to pick for each county.
They could pick anybody?
Yes.
There are some restrictions there. I think you have to have at least one law enforcement member to keep your NCIC or RMI.
But besides that, they can, you know.
They don't necessarily have to have any kind of credentials to be on this board?
Absolutely not. They could pick their grandfather.
Okay, so the reason we're talking about this, Bluegrass 911, is so that we have information, should we want to?
Ron has made the suggestion that we don't.
That we don't what?
That we don't merge. I'm just giving a little background of some of the things that, why we come to that conclusion.
Okay, so this is about us, the city, doing our own analysis?
Absolutely.
On Bluegrass 911 as it relates to the city and the city only?
Well, as county as a whole.
The county, the county needs to make their own?
Right, they make their own decision, but I have to use the whole number.
She's using call volumes.
I'm using call number, call is the whole volume, because that's what they asked us to use.
I got you.
She input our call volumes from the whole county that we currently have, that, to compare what would happen if we were to go over there, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
And that's the numbers that were released before. So I was comparing apples to apples.
Mayor, I probably should mention the fact that the General Assembly in 2016 created incentive for mergers of call centers, but those financial incentives are not applicable in case of partial withdrawal of a rural part of the county, for example, from a call center that doesn't close down. In order for any grant funding to be provided, you would have to actually consolidate and close our local call center, for example. Now, and we don't think, based on what we've said thus far, that the advantages that might be derived from that grant process would be greater than the loss that we would have locally in terms of all the benefits we now have. That's not to say that we should not consider the potential of expanding outward in the future if there is an opportunity for just hypothetically closing some other call center and still having Danville, Bull County operating and expanding out. That might make sense, but nowhere in the country have I've ever seen an urban area close down, older town, to go to a rural area for dispatch to the urban area.
And that ultimately serves to the point of having service agreements, because should the, the basic intention behind that statute was to in fact help incentivize underperforming call centers with insufficient budgets to deliver adequate services to citizens in need. So if that is not being achieved, you can see why merger would be incentivized from a grant perspective. And the other fact by having, would push us towards having some type of service agreement would allow Danville, Bull County 911 Center to in fact be one of those centers that could provide more regional services as we do with water and sewer in the future.
I don't think a service agreement is debatable at this point. I think that has to occur, no question. Whether it's you and I doing business as two individuals or two companies, service agreement's got to be written down.
Can someone tell me, if the county were to decide to go to the Bluegrass 911, would, where would those calls go and what would happen? Does anybody know?
Well, being, I'm not aware that they've done that type of a split before. That may be determined by CMRS or the new 911 Services Board. My understanding is until that change can be made, if they initially, we would have to still answer the call and do a enhanced transfer that we do now, like if we get a call from Garrett County or Lincoln. But that's one of those things, we'll just have to research a little more on it when it becomes time, because I'm not aware of a precedence that's happening in the past.
Our understanding is we'll go to like the main office.
The closest.
And they would have to dispatch themselves, for instance, if the county fire, they would have to determine who was going to dispatch their call, so the call would be routed to their main office. And then they get a dispatch themselves, or they have to contract for some other agency or service to be there for it.
Well, I think what you're discussing, they, essentially if the county agencies went to Bluegrass and the city didn't.
Right, that was my question.
Yeah, basically, it would, the calls are routed based off their location. So for example, you may be driving through Garrett County, and your call rings into Bull County cell tower. You're going to get Bull 911. We have a system in place that allows us with a push of a button to do enhanced transfer to another agency. So until that was determined how those boundaries would be redone, we would treat that the same way we do as if it was an I county call. Now, potentially those boundaries, once the merger, or once they transferred out, would possibly get redrawn as to where the breakpoint is on where that call is routed. And that's what I'm saying, I can't find the precedence in my research, but it has happened before, so I don't, I can't take it for sure.
I was just going to see what Rebecca had any.
It is based on location, and they would have to redo the boundaries, but until then we would, we would still have, be responsible for answering and transferring in.
Which adds seconds.
Correct.
Do you, do you know, when you have to transfer a call, do you know how much time that adds?
Um.
Is there a huge difference?
I would say, I mean, it could be, you know, as little as 10 seconds, it could be up to a minute, depending on how they're answering their phone, because if they're having to put people on hold, I mean, it's liable to ring several times, if not longer.
So purposes of this meeting is to educate us as commissioners to all the issues that you all as staff see here. So let me back up 40 paces here and ask a basic question. Is there anything out there, in your estimation and in your investigation, that would say to us as commissioners, as far as Bluegrass, as far as 911 for the City of Danville is concerned, we think that there's merit, and we think that, if we were to, we think that there would be a good opportunity in enhancing our service by going to Bluegrass 911. Yes or no?
No.
I just need to get that, get that out.
That's what I'm saying, no, Mayor.
That's fine, I just needed to make that a baseline move.
Correct.
So that I understand exactly where staff is coming from on that simple, simple issue. Thank you.
Can I say something on the, I have the user system? I think as far as, in my opinion, this is a paramedic only, a paramedic and a user system. So one of the two things, one, I feel like we don't have a voice in what happens in dispatch. And I don't like, I want to have a voice, I want us to be a system, and that's one. And the second thing is, anybody that knows me knows I'm very passionate about emergency medical dispatch, and I think the reason that, because of that, is because I'm out there. I see the families, I see the cardiac arrest patient, and I know as a system, we can do better. This is a, I consider as a paramedic, a public health emergency. In 2016, we had 54 cardiac arrests, and 52 of those patients died. And that is heartbreaking to me, and I see the families, I deal with it every day. And as the leadership of dispatch, I urge you to make this a priority over everything else.
This being what?
Emergency medical dispatch.
Okay.
Because it is so important, and we don't know, age is not a factor anymore. We see 38-year-olds, 28-year-olds, age is not a factor anymore. So, you know, we can make a difference in those patients, and we are, when I say we, we're a system, you know? When the first person calls 911, it starts with that dispatcher. That is one of the most important areas. That is the only area that I can see that we're lacking right now from an EMS side. But it's so important, and I mean, it literally keeps me awake about it.
And one thing to comment on that too, is that the type of voice that you're wanting to have, I think, again, not to keep on harping back to this point, but can so be readily resolved in a service agreement that says what your voice is?
Yeah.
And how you share those concerns. And things like emergency medical dispatch can be addressed clearly in a, in a service agreement with, when we define the roles of the parties and the equities involved and people's share in the pie.
So does, again, from my information, does Bluegrass 911 offer EMD?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me just say this about that, they, I think when we went to, over there, they had, I don't know, I think their staff looks like 13 to 14 people, if you look on their website. Maybe 15.
Actually more.
Yeah, 15 to 16, okay. We got 10?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine.
Okay. See what I'm saying right there? And look at our call volume.
Wait a minute, I'm missing your point, back up.
They've got 15 people on staff over there.
Right.
For less call volume.
For less call volume.
That's what Tony's saying, is we need more money to do it.
For two counties. We need what?
More money to do it.
For two counties.
Right.
For two counties. This one county is going to go over there and join those two counties, and we're going to be about 60%. And those two counties are going to be 40% together.
Well, and I hear you, thanks for pointing that out.
It's more, it's more than just, I hear you, I mean, these people understand, they're underpaid.
These people being?
Operators.
The workers.
Here.
Right here.
Right.
Yeah.
One thing I hear from other dispatch agencies is that the misunderstanding of it is, as soon as you pick up that emergency medical dispatch, you actually online. I think that is correct, but who says you can't put them on hold? So basically, we have an emergency right here, but we're not going to handle that emergency properly because we may have another emergency. I challenge you, why can't we try to start this now without hiring extra people? Even if you tried that and you could help two, and the rest of the time you're too busy not to be able to, at least, does that make sense?
It seems to me, if I can break this down into compartments, it seems to me that we have first determined, I heard you correct, that we have first determined that we have the right personnel, the right equipment, and we're providing the best of services right here. That's what I'm hearing. The second step needs to be, in going forward, do we have a partnership that would come out of a service agreement? That's going to tell us what our budget is. That's going to tell us how much money we've got to work with. Once that's kind of determined, then I think the next step is, okay, how do we incorporate this additional feature, which will cost money, but all good things do, into our future? Is that a, is that a safe, agreeable? into our future? Is that a, is that a safe, agreeable compartmentalization? What am I missing?
I think the general outline, the step 1A that we've talked about is upgrading our equipment.
Right.
To provide greater flexibility and efficiency in current staff.
And that's gonna happen.
And what is gonna happen, this takes the money that's reserved and held in the county to make that happen. But that's step 1A.
Right.
You know, and then with that enhanced capability and enhanced equipment, we can enter into the service agreements and then analyze about how we can provide medical dispatch.
And, and we enter a service agreement if there, if we, if there's somebody else that wants to be part of it.
Sure.
If it's just damble alone, then there's no need for a service agreement. And we figure out, okay, here's what we gotta work with. How do we make best use of that money?
Right. Okay. But then you're gonna know from your general fund what you're gonna have to commit.
Absolutely.
And so then you, you budget accordingly.
Absolutely.
And so the, the challenge on staff's end is to budget something when you don't know what the allocated allocation will be amongst parties involved through service agreements.
Well, this type of data, if given earlier, could have changed some votes during budgeting time. First time I heard that data was right then.
Well, I know Dr. Grant touched on it one time in the city commission meeting a little bit. I feel like he said that. I might have to look back.
He said our survival rate was zero, basically.
Well, in 2015, it was zero. 2016, we had two patients that left the hospital. And one, one patient was, I think, because of the proximity of the Danville Fire Department. And, and we give them props for stepping up to help Farm Mission too. They do a fantastic job. It's a very professional fire department. I can't say nothing to think about. But it's in proximity. If, if we can, if we can get that dispatcher to initiate CPR before we get there, we can double or triple that patient's chance of survival. The way it works now is that if the patient just ends up in ICU with brain injury because they went without oxygen for so long. And, and it just hurts my soul. Cause I know.
Absolutely. I actually was in the emergency room with a friend when Dr. Grant approached me about this. And he asked me, what do you think happens when you call 911? And, and I kind of paused. And he said, do you think you're gonna get direction? Well, yeah, it's, everybody thinks when they call 911, it's like on TV. Where they're gonna, they're gonna stay with you and they're gonna give you instruction through that whole call until the first responders get there. That's not at all what happens. And I think what I hear you saying is, instead of disconnecting the call, which is what they do now, correct?
Depending on what type of emergency. We do keep people on the line if they're home by their cell or, you know, something like that.
Okay. Or if they could at least say, or can they ask the question, do you know CPR? Because some people are gonna be in panic mode and, and they're not gonna be thinking and they're gonna forget, oh yeah, I do know CPR.
And it's those dispatcher instructions that will say that.
And so what I hear from Tony and Rebecca is, with the new system, it's taking a lot of the extra calls from the dispatcher. So if we get this, or maybe even in the process of getting this new system implemented, if that's gonna take some things off the dispatchers, then we can at least not maybe implement the full EMD system, but at least say, you know, or put them on hold and keep coming back. I mean, do, does that happen now? Does somebody get put on hold and get, come back to you or?
I don't think you can. Every call is different.
Right.
You, you, you can't lay out a script for a call. And you don't know, Lisa worked New Year's Eve, I mean, July the 4th by herself.
What?
I mean, there's, she worked third shift, July the 4th by herself. I mean, people want vacation too. Only got ten people. Damn. I mean, you know, so how's she gonna do EMD? The sheriff's office had a pursuit. We got fireworks going off like crazy. I mean, you know, how, how, you tell me how one person is gonna do all of that. I'm not saying I'm against EMD. I'm not. But we gotta have staff people.
If we can get that CPR started, and really all I want them to do, the perfect situation is if, if Rebecca can get the person in the floor, the victim in the floor, and someone doing CPR till we get there, that's all I need. I don't need anything. Just push on the chest. Don't worry about.
They don't necessarily have.
After that, you can put them on hold and not go back to them. As long as they just keep doing what Rebecca told them to do.
And there are instances that if I take an emergency call and I'm busy, like on Fort Villal, and it's something that needs CPR, I will ask EMS to call for conference. And we have conference EMS with the patient so that I can put them on hold and don't handle whatever other emergency we have. That, that's been done numerous times. So it's not like they're offering no help. I mean, they, they are doing the option to conference with EMS.
Okay.
And further to that, we ask them to call even if they're just sitting in the office and the other trucks that aren't out. They refuse to call. We ask.
Well, we're not this bad.
Give free arrival.
We don't have, we don't have the very system that you need. You know, the, the system that you buy, the EMD, has been invented. It's been tried. It's been changed and changed and changed. We don't have that in front of us. So the instructions you give on the system are 100% safe. You see? That makes a difference. As a paramedic, I can't, I don't have that option to read that. If you guys bought that, if you bought that software right now, which I think is around $5,000, then you could have that system to read off. And then, you know, I sense a lot of pride in your dispatch center. I, I, I love that. But I just think we can do better.
Well, and I think, I think to wrap this thing full circle, I think it's, it's this. I don't think the commission made a position that they don't want emergency medical dispatch. I think they said they value it or that wouldn't have been in the budget.
Yes.
There was, I think the concern was timing of implementation. And there was a concern where there could be implemented successfully in this next fiscal year due to budget restrictions and in light of not having a financial commitment from all partner agencies. To know what in fact, what the city's general obligation budget would be. This is but one piece of the large pie of services offered by the City of Danville. So in light of that, I, I think a, a policy decision was made to say, let's shore up the 911 center, which has been over a decade due. And then move forward in some type of systematic way to implement what in fact you value and the commission values and sounds like the other agencies value as well. The, the struggle part is to simply find a mechanism where all parties are on board and how it's going to be funded equitably and in writing. And to address funds, tax dollars that are held now, you know, in escrow essentially by the county for essential services that has to be spent on this 911 center.
I, I'm appreciative of the passion in this room. That's a good thing. It's, it's nice. Let me digress a moment. And, and Mr. Scott, you may have touched upon it. If you did, I apologize. I missed it. There was a verbal agreement in 1988. Back us up and, and, and tell us the legal formation of, of 911. Who owns it? How do they own it? Under authority do they own it? Run it? Or whatever?
Okay, Mayor, before I, before I answer that question, I want to respond discreet to Captain Rogers' comment about the, the need for improved people dispatch service. And his comment, which was illustrative to me or, or helpful to me about getting that $5,000 piece of software to provide, you know, service prior to arrival. You know, maybe one of the things going forward, and once we get our new system in place, for a little time, we can invest in that equipment. It seems to me that one of the optimal solutions, it was talked about the conferencing that has occurred on some occasion, is to involve you guys before you arrive on the scene and talking directly with the patient, give you a head start in terms of what they're, I mean, the person is calling about the patient. Knowledge ahead of time directly and have you more proactively involved earlier. To me, that seems like a partial and maybe a major solution in terms of.
It does. The only thing that would be a problem with that is, what if all our trucks are out? And then we don't.
There, there's no single answer, David. But as a general, as a general approach though, if you want to have better outcomes.
Even though not optimal, I, I would be open to that. I thought that's been done before, but.
It's a possible improvement. That's all I'm, you know, the software and connection earlier.
So step in the right direction.
That's a, so something to be looked at.
With regard to, you know, your general question about the formation of E911, or 911, and then the improved E911 services, you know, the, the, it's really a state and local shared responsibility of the 911 board and those cities or counties that want to create 911 centers. The, the legislation and the regulations that went to how these are created and how they are operated and how they are certified encourage the formation of 911 centers more rather than fewer, recognizing certainly diversity of Kentucky geographically, financially, and, and otherwise. So the state encouraged the formation of as many of those that were, that could be done. Our history of agreement was that the, the city filed the, the certification forms. It said the name of the Bull County, Danville County 911 center. But like the Bluegrass 911 center, you can have any name on the form. The county did pass the, at the request of the city, as I understand Stephen, the, the county wide tax on landline telephones back in the mid 1980s to help fund that system and park. But it's required to be operated by law enforcement agency. And as a matter of fact, the city owns the facility, hires and supervises the staff, pays the majority of operating expenses, even though we have contributions much appreciated from other parties in the county that receive services. And the county did step up in a pretty significant way in 2011 to help meet that operational cost. So it's a certification and recertification annually provided by the state in order to operate a 911 center. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but we have had a history of providing that service since around 1988, I guess.
So KRS, who's responsible according to KRS?
City of Danville.
Well, the City of Danville operates and certifies and recertifies and files the form. The, the, the other question is that the, the state's shared revenue, which is the tax on cell phones, prepaid and otherwise, can only be spent for approved expenditures of the 911 center. So, I mean.
Approved by who?
Of the state, because they are responsible for collecting from telephone providers. And they have a very specific list of items that can be used, of the spending money that you used.
By the public service entry point, which is the city's. So the funds are.
By law, it is the city.
It is. But the funds are sent to the county. So in essence, what, through our evaluation of this process throughout the state, a lot of times like we do in a lot of type of contracting, the county is essentially a fiscal agent or escrow agent for receipt of funds, which is generally immediately passed through to the public service entry point or the City of Danville 911 call center. Now, but that in fact hasn't, that has occurred in the, in the past, but it hasn't been the most current procedure. Whereas now, the county holds a little over $700,000, if I remember correctly, $750,000 of these funds that are, can only be expensed for limited purposes for the 911 call center. So the city manager, in, in light of the technical improvements that need to be made here at the tune of, Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, about half a million dollars or more, that's an estimate. The city has requested immediate transfer of those, those funds by essentially the end of this month. So that those expenses can be, or those, that technology can be purchased and implemented timely.
Would, would there be any reason that you could think of that, that timely transfer of funds wouldn't occur?
I would hope not.
On a valid basis, would you?
Well, there's no legal basis for doing so. We, it would seem to be contrary to law and precedent for them to be held for any other purpose.
Well, it's kind of contrary to our own verbal service agreement of 1988 that says, we're trying to provide services.
Right. And, and I'll go as far to say this, that the other need for a service agreement is that the law does not authorize the operation of a center in the manner in which it's operated here in Danville. The law contemplates that. What we have, what we need to have is a service that's operated with service agreements or through other, some type of arrangement. But there's nothing authorized under law to have an oral agreement to say, well, we're gonna contribute about 35% or whatever it may be to, to your, the services you're providing. That type of system we know is not authorized. Cities can only operate as they are given legislative right to operate. And it's very clear how these types of systems should be formed. It's also equally clear that the county's receipt of those funds is a mere pass-through to the public service entry point, which here is the city, the City of Danville.
Which means they should have never been held in the first place.
That's accurate.
So, so the county is, is in the process of doing their due diligence, which, which they have not only every right to do, they, they have an obligation to do that. It's what's in the best interest of, of their elector, what's in the best interest of their operations.
Sure.
But at some point, we need to have some decision from them so that we can move forward in our progression.
That's exactly right. I, I think the steps would look something like this. The request has been made for the transfer of those funds, which is compatible with the law.
All of the funds or just?
All of the funds.
All of them? $750,000?
Yes. And then it's allowed the technological improvements to be made and going forward for any receipt of those funds to be transferred in a light manner as a pass-through and not held in reserve. Second of all, the county would need to make their decision as to whether they want to continue receiving services from the 911 call center in Danville. And if so, then, or merger with.
Bluegrass.
Bluegrass. Or choose. I, I, we're using the word merger. It's not typically, it's not a merger because they don't have anything to merge.
They're so contracted.
That's right. They would be contracted for services either with Bluegrass or the city. So that's their decision. Transfer the funds, make a decision on who you want to receive your services from, and then contract with either one to deliver those services.
Is there a timeline to each of those steps? And, and we said we need to know something about this date, this date, this date.
Well, we've requested funds by the end of this month.
Okay.
And it's actually just shot at the end of this month.
Stephen, what would happen in this community if the next city commission meeting, I, I convinced the five of us to vote to close the 911 center down? What would happen in this city and this community?
Well, if you don't have a, Nick and Rebecca can talk to this too, but if you don't have a 911 call center, then the calls, I believe, are dispatched by Kentucky State Police. Is that accurate?
We're required as the certified PSET to answer the call.
Your what's right again?
We're required to answer the call. As long as we, as we as the city, as the PSET holder are required to answer.
He's saying, I think, if we didn't recertify, let's say.
If we didn't recertify, the law enforcement calls would go to KSP. And I believe the, I believe all calls initially would be routed to KSP. How KSP would handle those calls from there, I cannot tell you. There have been counties in the past who have shut down centers and, and routed to the nearest KSP post.
All the calls in the entire county?
No, that's just 911 calls. The admin calls would.
No, no, no. I'm talking about, I'm talking about 911 calls.
All the 911 calls in the county would be routed to.
Herbville, Johnson City.
Richmond.
Danville and the whole county.
Yep.
All of them sent to KSP, right? And we'd be in a tizzy.
Potentially.
So nobody wants that to happen in this community. And speaking from an individual, I don't want to see us relying on someone else who doesn't know me, doesn't know where I live, to be dispatched.
Well, I just want to say, you know, where, where part of my frustration lies is, at some point in time, and I don't think anybody really knows what, when this happened, the county decided to hold those funds. So the perception is that possession is nine tenths of the law. And, and the way that the city feels is, we're having to go to the county to ask permission to spend our own money, when it should just automatically, it should just be a pass-through. So a pass-through means, maybe county is collecting those funds just like they do our taxes, but they're, they're. our taxes, but they're immediately, immediately passing those funds to the correct entity. For whatever reason, for I don't even know how many years, that has not been happening. So, our city attorney and our city manager, for, I think, over a year now, have been working with the state to have those funds sent directly to the city instead of having a pass-through. Or if it is, if it does go to the county, it would automatically be a pass-through. So...
I've tried to get us on the positive route.
That's where part of our frustration lies with EMD. Well, you know, I'm going to talk about the elephant in the room.
I think the positive route for us right now is that I have faith in the fact that the county's going to pass the funds forward to where they should go. They're good enough PR about that. I think, as I read the Advocate Messenger, someone in the finance department of the county made a statement that the city had not asked and requested additional funds from the 911 funds.
But we shouldn't have.
Well, again, I'm not going to debate that. I think the, the, the word is out, and we requested, and we have a $800,000 upgrade that needs to be done. These guys sitting here just slapping in the face, talking about, "Well, I should have voted for something else, but I didn't vote for one, I could have voted for two to vote for it." But this is my sixth year, seventh year. You've been on this thing for a good little while, but I really never heard any of this kind of stuff. Dr. Grant came down here to talk to us about all the, the need for this type of a service. That's the first time I've heard about anything like that, because I've been on the campaign.
Well, I think, I think...
So, it's not going to get solved because he came down to talk to us. So, you guys are going to keep on coming back and pushing the envelope and keeping us in front of the fight that it needs to be done ASAP. Mayor Grant said, "What the county does with the funds or not, that's not my issue right now." My issue right now is that you're telling us there's citizens out there down because we're not doing so.
And that, and, you know, that was part of my point, is there's another $250,000 that we can't get to at the moment to implement EMD.
I think it's all going to, I think we need to write a request for the entire amount. Where'd he go?
Every request has been done.
That's right.
Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take what you said, and maybe angle is a little different.
Okay.
We, we, we have heard, we have heard of those deaths.
Yeah.
Dr. Grant made us aware of it first. These professionals have underscored. I don't need to hear any more from them, because there's nothing more that they can say that, to me, it's, it balls in our court.
You haven't got it done. They keep saying you haven't got it done.
Well, but we need to look at ourselves...
I know.
...as leaders and say, "Is this something we need to do for this community? As the people who ask us to lead this community, is this something we need to do? And if we agree on a majority vote, that's what we need to do, let's get it done."
2018 is an election year for all of us, city and county.
I don't care.
I do, I do, because I'm making an issue if it's not done by then.
Well, it could, it could have been done this year.
I expect it to be in our budget next year, and it was this year.
You hear what I just said, right? And that's off the record. When you think about it, if it's that important to us, then we ought to get some action taken on it. And I'm saying us, when I say us, I'm talking about the entire county. Now, I can't control what people in another body, elected officials do. What I can sure is, you know, what push and prod and whatever I can with the five of us to get something done about this.
So...
It is not just about money.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 I know.
No, we gotta have people.
I know.
But you gotta, only you get people, you gotta have the money.
Yeah.
And you gotta pay them something.
Yeah, they gotta work for free.
Yeah, and I gotta work for free.
That's called money. Yeah.
There's a whole lot of it.
That $300,000 plus dollars, I thought almost was annually, was about training and about personnel and about a little bit of everything to get this done.
Right, and then it would drop down to $700,000 a year for just personnel.
And the scary thing about what he just said to me is that we're all getting more and more of the drug situation in this county.
So, let me ask you this question.
That's increasing.
Yeah.
Of the $750,000 that...
We're gonna get it.
I'm optimistic that we're going to receive.
That's right.
How much of that is going to be available after the upgrade?
We don't know yet because we're putting out RFPs as we say.
So, we said the upgrade's 505 plus.
And that's, that's a best guess.
My Jethro Bodine math...
All that money could...
...says there's $200,000 left.
Right, if it doesn't go up to that...
Let's see, go ahead, Dick, and address the money issue.
We've got another issue on how that money can be spent on, what it can be spent on. And I don't believe EMD is one of those things.
It is not?
It has to be something related to the answering of the call, not how you dispatch or act after the call.
Yeah, that's, that's important information to know.
We cannot use any of that $750,000 to implement EMD?
No, it can be paid for building that, for maintenance and upgrades to a building that provides the facility to answer a 911 call or and/or the equipment to answer the call, but not the equipment to dispatch or to provide services after the call.
However, what it can be, it can free up some of the general budget dollars that are used for...
Exactly. But the actual money that's there now, it has very specific guidelines on how it can be spent, and there's a, I forget the terrorist section, but it outlines exactly what it can be spent.
But that calculation can be done, and you could, once you know how much of the approved expenditures come from your general fund, you just, you credit general fund for that, and then it frees up some of those general fund dollars that you see as a guideline.
You trade now.
That's right.
Mayor, I can answer your last question, and that was a timeline for the county to
make their decision whether they would join Bluegrass or remain with the city through some type of service agreement. That hasn't been established. I think, I think it would be arrogant of us to place some type of timeline on the county to make such a significant decision, honestly. And I think it's impractical to say anything short of some good amount of time. But we would need to know, certainly before the beginning of the next budget process, but I mean, you probably said at the end of the year.
I agree with you that they need an adequate amount of time. But while they have a business decision to make, we got a business decision to make. We can't sit here and hold it pattern forever.
Right.
I mean, we can go ahead and do what we need to do, but we got business to tend to here.
And I think the city said today that's going to continue.
And I got a feeling on the county side of things, they'd like, they'd like to get all this resolved too, one way or the other.
I would think a prudent, flexible goal would be resolution of this issue by the end of this calendar year through, and I'm talking about a full execution of the service agreement by December.
That's fair.
And that would allow, I mean, that's half of this fiscal year, and then it would allow adequate planning and budget preparation for the next fiscal year.
I guess I thought you maybe were already drafting a service agreement?
I, in, in the...
Early.
Right, in the early process of that, it would be nice to know before more time is expended on that, if I'm drafting it for a file or for execution. You know, nobody likes to spin their wheels and come up with a great system that's never implemented. So, we are in the stages of that, so hopefully, when the county makes their decision, if they're ready, then we can act upon it. But if they do elect to continue receiving services here, obviously, we would want the county to have input in the agreement itself.
Absolutely.
So, and there are certain parameters that I can put in place, but as far as some of this, you know, wanting to have a voice in how we share complaints or how we share improvements, certainly, we would want the public agencies to have an input in what is developed in that agreement. So, while I can have a skeletal outline of what that agreement will be, it will need to be filled in through cooperation of the parties.
And I'm going to go out a bit on a limb and say that I think in their due diligence and based on this conversation, I hope that they will see that this arrangement here is in their best interest, financially and from a service perspective.
That includes Johnson City, Herbl County.
Yes. That said, one of the things that I think has popped up, not in just this conversation, but in other conversations I've had, is that when we get to this agreement part, and even if we don't, I'm gonna say even if we don't get to agreement, even if Danville does it alone, we need to have about a quarterly meeting, I think, of all parties. 911 staff, EMS providers, DPD, because there's some, communication's a wonderful thing. It says, "You know, we've got this issue." Somebody says, "No idea, you even had that issue? How do we handle it?" So, I think, I think regardless of what the path is forward, we need to establish some consistent means of, of the main players getting together and say, "Hey, how are things working?"
And where people can come and discuss these issues without being concerned about their next paycheck. See, I think we've gotten to this point where people are afraid to speak up and tell us things because, quote unquote, the city commission and the fiscal court begin to play politics, and that's not what's best for this county or for this city. We ought to stop playing politics and get at the real issues.
Business.
Yeah, just doing good business, yeah. Keep the lawyers employed.
Well, we can't solve anything if we're not aware, so...
I agree, y'all. That's why, I like his proposal about talking. But see, we sit around too often, and we talking to just us and just the fiscal court members, excuse me, we don't really get to hear from the real soldiers out of the field. And you guys are the real soldiers out in the field. We need to hear from you all.
Mr. Scott, you guys say something?
Just a perhaps concluding comment, and that is, I think we all can agree and acknowledge that this conversation has been long overdue in terms of talking about how we improve, continue to fund, and move forward as a community to provide this service. And I would remind the mayor and the commissioner and all present perhaps, that for the last two years, we've talked about trying to improve our economic development results here. Everyone wants a safe community to live and operate business in, and I will be very surprised if at the end of the day, end of December, that we don't recognize that it's in our all, in our mutual interest to move ahead with a service agreement and a better system that operates here in Boyle County rather than to do otherwise.
We have a guest in the audience. I'm thrilled to have him, and I believe he's raised his hand, and I'd like to call on Magister John Kaywood.
Thank you. You're hard to believe, Mayor.
Everybody write that down. He said that.
I have quietly listened. First, I want to appreciate the opportunity to come. I appreciate the other folks who represent the county, the city, first responders, if you may, for coming. This is an opportunity for them because what I have sensed for a while is some festering of feelings that really haven't had an opportunity to come to be discussed. I think they're being discussed today, and what I would suggest to the chief is that he get with these guys, because these guys speak a different language that everybody else in the room doesn't really understand.
That's right.
Because they live in a different, they're in a different trench. They understand, they've got their own lingo, they know how to relate to each other because in many ways, they're brothers and sisters. Anybody with any military experience will understand that, but they, they know how to talk to each other. So, I would suggest to the chief, get with them on a regular basis, listen to them, as I know that he will, with the, with the attitude, "We're gonna make things better," because the people in the field that we go and see, they're the ones that we have to work with, and they're the ones, with us being better, we can give better service to them. So, it's all about citizens. So, I recommend that. The other problems that have been discussed that have been excellent, goes back to leadership, and I'll take my share of responsibility for that, but I think I'm correct in this. There really hasn't been a real strong meeting of 911. I know you and the judge have had some, some communications in some meetings. The court has not been involved. I'm not sure that the commissioners have been around the table also. I think there should be part of the agreement, Steve, is that this group comes together on a regular basis and has this discussion, because there's a lot of places that 911 is really suffering now because of financial situations, and we've seen the use of landlines go down through the years, and money has become very tight, and, and technology has improved. It will be outdated the moment you put it in, the next day, it will be outdated. And with the new equipment, we can improve the service, and that's what everybody wants. But I do think there needs to be a coming together, like today, you all did the leadership on that. It's unfortunate that part of today was brought about by things that maybe could have been reconciled before now, but it has pushed it to this, to today, and that's, that's okay. But that needs to be part of the agreement, Steve, and you and Lynn, as well as the leadership, needs to have a full understanding, and needs to all have input. You all need to have input into the 911, medical dispatch. I think I can say for the court, and I'm choosing my words carefully because I've got a lot of other members that you all would choose. Every now and then, I feel like the elephant in the room, I'll have to admit. We're interested in the medical dispatch also, and want to be a part of that program. I think it's an important thing. Dr. Grant makes a very good case for giving these, these gentlemen, the dispatchers, I mean, the dispatchers and first responders, the very best service that they can give out in the field. Until you've been in the field, you don't know what the field is like. So, I respect them back there, and I appreciate their attendance today. Y'all have talked about a lot of things, and I can't remember all the things I want to relate to, but I want to thank you first for having us be invited to court. Kind of wish I had more of my fellows with me, but it is what it is.
I'm glad you're here. Thanks for being here. Is it, is it, it's called 11, the time I begin to wrap this up? Is there anyone else in the audience that has a burning desire? How about anybody else on the commission? Staff? Then let me conclude with an interesting observation. In spite of all the deficiencies that we've discussed today, we still are seen as the model 911 in the state. In spite of inferior technology, in spite of inferior location, if you will, we're still the model. It's not because of us, that's because of you all. That's because of you folks, like Magister Kaywood said, that are out on that front line. We have a job to do, we're gonna get it done. I think there's a very strong commitment on this commission, and, and so, I don't know how you go, where you go from being number one, but we'll continue to be number one by a longer stretch, as that. If there's nothing further, thank everyone for your valuable time, and have a safe rest of the week.